Directly to the events that are happening inside these neighborhood associations, if possible. What we try to do, start small, right? I'm a big believer in that. Start small. A hayride starts with, we've got to pay for a hayride, right? So we figure that out. The next year, okay, let's maybe do a light competition. Let's maybe add this or add that. And really slowly work people into some of these larger things. The Water Tower Flapjack Festival is a great example of that. They have been sponsored through this the last handful of years, and it was the same thing. First year was $750 to just figure out what to do. This last year, I believe upwards of $2,500 towards that event. And the goal is to have it be something that can continue to be sustainable and then yet at the same time be something that families in Brainerd can come and enjoy. So, do you have anything to share as well, Katie?
I think you covered it pretty well, Dave.
Can I ask if anybody has any questions? Our community action people? Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for what you guys do, and thank you for giving us an opportunity to be a part of it.
Thank you. Next up is item seven. Council committee reports. Item seven A is Personal and Finance Committee Chairman Gabe Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have seven items on the agenda, the first of which is a shared service agreement with the Brainerd Economic Development Authority, and the motion is to approve the 2024 Shared Services Agreement with the EDA in the amount of $17,000, and I so move.
Second. We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last year, our staff, city staff, started tracking the time they spend on EDA-specific initiatives, and it did come out to around $17,000. So that's what the EDA approved in their budget to pay the city for the staff time, and that's what our staff has said they have spent in time on it. So this is kind of a wash of a contract.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. The next item is the resignation of Assistant Planner Dylan Edwards, and the motion is to accept with regret Mr. Dylan Edwards' resignation effective December 15, 2023. Further, to approve the updated job description and authorize staff to begin the hiring process to backfill the assistant planner position, and I so move.
Second.
Thank you. We've got a motion by Johnson, a second by Terry. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up is the use of some local program income funds, and the motion is to authorize the use of the local program income funds to be used for 50% of the asbestos abatement and demolition of the structure at 426 B Street, not to exceed $15,000, and I so move.
We have a motion by Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Terry. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson.
So we have a local program income fund that has about $102,000 in it, and the HRA has identified a blighted property on B Street that suffered a house fire earlier this year and has just been sitting there, half burned and vacant all year. They think they can demolish the building, get the site prepped for a new single-family home in Brainerd for $30,000. So we're gonna, this motion is to authorize spending 15, paying for half of it, and their intention is to transfer the lot to Habitat for Humanity to have a single-family home built on the lot.
Excellent. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up is just a discussion or notification on the joint powers agreement for the Lakes Area Drug Investigation, Investigative Division. The joint powers comes up every two years, and it's an auto renew in the joint powers. So it is up for auto renewal right now. That investigative task force doesn't recommend any changes. The city staff hasn't recommended any changes. They were just putting it before us to see if any city council members had any questions or recommended changes.
Any questions, comments on the Drug Investigative Division? None? Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up is an update regarding the new earned safe and sick time law policy. Another discussion or update? The state of Minnesota passed an earned, safe, and sick time law in this past session, and it's more, they passed it really to focus on the private sector businesses that aren't offering sick time. We offer sick time, and we offer it much more than what the law requires. So Chris just gave us an update on how they're implementing it, and if you see in the agenda, there's three options. They're implementing it by option one, and we thought it sounded good, following the law.
Any questions or comments on the new earned, safe, and sick time law? Hearing none. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. This one has action. This is considering approval of the social media policy, and the motion is to approve the attached social media policy as presented.
We have a motion by Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stunek. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. The last item is the Housing Trust Fund levy to Crow Wing County. We did have a resolution on the agenda. I guess we could have amended that item. We don't have the resolution tonight. We're gonna have to hold a public hearing and maybe adopt the resolution on the January 2 meeting. But just as the background, the county HRA houses the Housing Trust Fund, and they can't tax the citizens of Brainerd or Pequot or Crosby because we have municipal HRAs. So they need a resolution to consent to tax our citizens. It would amount to about a .194% tax increase, but it would be a tax increase on the county's line item on the property taxes, not on the city's line, but we expect to have that January 2.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments? Mr. Lango.
Mr. President, counsel, could we postpone that until the next meeting, please? We've discovered since that came up for another city that that requires a public hearing before it's adopted.
I think Gabe said that.
That's, yeah, that's what I said. You're gonna do that? Okay.
Yeah, we're just asking if there's any questions or comments. We're not looking for a motion on this this evening. As Chairman Johnson and the attorney just said, we have to hold a public hearing on this, which there's some notification laws that we have to follow, so this will come up in January. But any comments on it? Hearing none. Please proceed.
End of report.
Thank you very much. Next up is item seven. B, Safety and Public Works Committee Chairman Michael Day.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had five items on our agenda tonight. We did have some technical difficulties, so one of these items we will actually be doing as full counsel. Well, one, it's two items we want to hear from Jesse. One is just a discussion. One will be not requiring a motion.
I think we have Jesse online.
We do now.
Yep.
But we went ahead and made some motions without hearing from Jesse on the first couple. So the first one, motion coming out of committee, this is a final pay request for improvement 2210, the Graden Outfall. And motion coming out of committee was to approve the final pay request for improvement 2210, Graden Outfall, in the amount of $56,816, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, second by Stingline. Any discussion? Chairman O'Day.
If you guys remember, this is kind of a collection into drainage that kind of meets up with Little Buffalo Creek through the lowest part of where Graden Avenue runs. It was kind of falling apart underground. We have a easement over it. We had to dig it up, replace it. The budget was 50,000. The contract ended up being 51,971. And then in the end, some riprap was added just because of the health fastest coming out of there and the erosion that was happening before. So that was another $4,845, and that's why the amount got up to 56,816.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next item was construction testing proposals for the Buffalo Hills Gully Remediation Project. And motion coming out of committee was to authorize the quote with ITT and the total amount of $1,880, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Stingline. Any discussion? Mr. Chair?
So the gully remediation project that we've visited numerous times, this is just materials testing. We had two bids. One was $2,930 from Braun InterTech, but ITT's was over $1,000 cheaper, and it's essentially the same testing, so that's what we went with.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next item was one of them that we wanted to hear from Mr. Dean.
Are you with us, Mr. Dean?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right, we hear you.
Wonderful. So the item before you is the street scanning proposal. If you remember, we had some discussions this last summer about street scanning and discuss some of the proposals. So we budgeted 35,000 to come out of Construction Fund 401 in 2024. We sent out a request for proposals from a handful of vendors, and we received five responses. After reviewing the proposals, we put together a few different options for the council to consider. A couple of them would be under the 35 they originally budgeted. Some of them are a little bit higher. We think that there's some value into some of the additional tasks that we're asking for. Ultimately, our staff is recommending option two that we have listed in the memo, which would be warding of the street scanning contract to Good Point for tasks one, two, and three, which would be street scanning, sidewalk inventory, and ADA ramp inventory, as well as street sign inventory and collection. That total amount would be a total of $59,640.
Any questions of staff? Mr. O'Day?
Yeah, Jesse, I wanted to ask you, this $59,640, we have, is this coming, is this coming from levied funds or is this existing funds in the construction fund?
So this is part of the construction 401 that we levy dollars into each year.
So we have 35,000 that is currently budgeted in that last budget that we were presented at 6.24%, correct?
I believe so, as long as there's no changes in the discussion for levy later on in the meeting.
Okay, so this 59,640, that would go up above and beyond, increasing the levy increase above 6.24%?
Connie might be able to correct me, but I believe.
Jesse, let me turn it over to Connie. I think she's got, I think she's got a clarification. Just hang on, Jesse.
So the permanent improvement levy is what we levy for road construction projects that goes into Fund 401. That is set as a 6% per the charter. We can go up to 9%. It is set at 6% for this, for 2024. So what that levy pays for would be the street scanscaping, repairs, and maintenance, and the salary that is allocated to Fund 401. So it won't cause an increase in the levy at this point.
Okay. So whether we said yes to the whole thing or no to the whole thing or yes to parts of it, it wouldn't affect the levy increase this year?
Correct.
Okay, but going into?
I would say no, it wouldn't affect it. We would, the other projects or whatever, we would make it work.
But if, Brent, if you could pull up that chart where we have the cost, I believe it's in the next, maybe the next page.
Next page. Yep, there it is.
There's a, if you scan over to the right, annual licensing. The one we're looking at going with would be, is it Good Point, the top one?
Yep.
So annual license.
That's my recommendation.
Annual license fee would be $3,270. Would that come from the same fund?
Yes, and that amount could be absorbed in that fund.
Okay. Well, I'm just glad that we're having this as a full council, because we only had two, so I'd love to hear input from the rest of the council.
You've got it. Jesse, is there anything else you want to add before I?
No, sir, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions of staff? Either Connie or Jesse, or just comments? All right, Chairman Johnson.
I just have a comment. I see the four options here. I like being presented options, so thanks for that, Jesse. But of the options presented, I'm quite partial to option number four, do not award contract. But that's my thought.
Speaking against the recommendation?
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments? Chairman O'Day?
So my initial reaction to this one is what we need to do is get the street scanned for the main reason of mapping without any subjectivity from anybody that's grading our streets. We do use an intern annually that goes around and just, in their opinion, kind of grades how bad each street is. This would take that and make it very objective. And we're trying to get a map of the age of all of our pipes, along with, you know, storm sewers, sanitary sewers, water mains, everything that BPU has underground as well, so we can prioritize better. In my opinion, I think what we need from this is just the scan of the street. The sidewalk stuff is good. Do we need it? In my opinion, maybe not as much, because we can just identify those sidewalks, whether they need repair as we do those streets. The signs, I'm not really sure if the value is there. I don't do that every day, so I don't. But I do know that we do need a better grading system on our streets. So if I were to make a motion, I would lean towards, I'm not sure if it's in any of these options, but going with Good Point and just doing the 19,000. Could you pull up that other chart again, Brent? Good Point with task one, which is just pavement evaluation. That would be under budget what we've actually been looking for under that 35,000, and we would have our street scanned.
I have good news for you. You're gonna get your wishes in about two minutes.
What's that?
You'll get to make the motion. But I just want to make sure everybody's clear as to what the issue is, what staff's recommending, where the money would come from, okay? Because it's a little unusual that we don't have a recommendation from Safety and Public Works. Okay, we're looking for a motion, Mr. O'Day.
A motion to go with a proposal from Good Point and just doing task one at $19,340, and the licensing or initial software setup of $4,780, which might change, I'm guessing, based on what tasks we do. That's my motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Terry. Now we can discuss the motion. Any comments on the motion? Questions? Comments? Mr. Chairman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't disagree with the chair that we could have, we may, we could for sure, and maybe we should have a better system evaluating the streets. But I just think in a year where we're looking at a 6, 7, 10.34% levy increase, even though we can talk it away by saying, well, it comes out of the construction fund, that's a set rate, that it would just be spent somewhere else, I don't think we need to be taking on additional expenditures when we have such a rough budgetary year. So I'm gonna vote no, even on option three, even though in a different year, I might support it.
Thank you. Chair, Terry?
Building off what Councilmember Johnson just said, I am in support of Councilmember O'Day's motion to move this work forward, but on a smaller scale, understanding that we did have a budgeted amount in place, and I'm not willing to go over that budgeted amount for the staff recommendation.
Alder Roman Stingline.
In a different year, I might be entirely in favor of option two, but I happen to agree with Councilmember Johnson that this is not the year. So I will be voting against. I think that we are not ready to move forward this year with this.
Okay. I'm also gonna vote against this, because I think it'd probably be really nifty, but I think right now, we can handle what streets need to be done. We're not looking for streets to do. So, not to say that it wouldn't be a good thing in the future to be able to have a more objective setup than having interns walk the streets. Everybody had their say? Anything else that needs to be said? The motion is to modify staff's recommendation and hire Good Point for task one only pavement evaluation, $19,340, plus of course, the annual accessories. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Aye. That motion fails. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next, we have direction on active code enforcement. This one, we had one case file attached at 319 Ninth Street North. Motion coming out of committee was to recommend a $300 citation every month until the property maintenance issues have been corrected, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Stingline. Any discussion? Chairman O'Day?
If you look at these pictures here, and James, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's basically property maintenance issues. You can see the roof is falling apart. They haven't returned any phone calls or letters or anything. We are now at the point where we reached that $300 citation. We're just gonna continue those monthly until we hear from this person or they fix the issues.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Stingline to follow staff's recommendation. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign? Aye. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last item was just an informational item, and this is another one that we wanted to hear from Mr. Dean regarding the $25 million grant for Highway 210 Washington Street Reconstruction Project.
Mr. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll just highlight a couple of the high points of it in that thing, but if you remember, over the last year, we've brought a couple of different letters of support to the council for some federal grant programs that MINDOT was gonna apply for, for the Highway 210 Washington Street Reconstruction Project. We found out this last Tuesday that MINDOT was successful in gaining one of the $25 million grants for the project. So really, our next steps are, once they finalize the grant agreements with the federal government, then we'll start having discussions about budget and how those funds will be allocated. Although through our discussions throughout the process, and even before they were applying, the intention was that these grants were intended to cover a significant portion of the local costs on the project. One of the things we'll have to discuss is the eligibility of some of the work, if making sure that it's better than eligible. If not, those funds would have to be covered on our end. This is a really good thing for us. This should help us a ton with not only short term, but long term for our stability balance.
Thank you, Jesse. Any questions for staff? Mr. O'Day?
Yeah, Jesse, I'm wondering, as a general rule, are you thinking that most of the funds that would be coming from the BPU side of the project would be the funds that wouldn't be eligible for this, or would those also be eligible?
In my history, federal grants have typically not included utilities, but I was also told that this one potentially does cover utilities. So I do need to get some clarification on this grant and if that would be an eligible cost, but that's yet to be determined.
Okay. And then the other question was just about the decorative streetlights that we've established. Would that be an eligible expense as well?
Most likely. Some of the aesthetics may not be, so I'll have to see how that would apply for our lighting, if the lighting is considered an aesthetic upgrade, and if all of the lighting costs would be eligible, but I will confirm that as we go through the process as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, just a small comment. I received a phone call from Senator Klobuchar on this issue last week, I believe it was, and just wanted to say thank you to her for reaching back out. She spoke of our conversation when she was here for the Water Tower and how that led to some discussions about this street, and just really glad to see this process move forward and look forward to working with MINDOT on allocating those dollars into getting this project done in a fiscally responsible manner.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff or comments? All right, thank you, Jesse. This is informational. Anything else?
End of report.
Thank you very much. Next up is eight unfinished business, eight A call for applicants. Mr. Mayor?
Holy Hannah. We actually have two recommendations before we start, if I may.
Yes.
So I have two recommendations, both for the library board, one John Stubbs and one Karen Johnson.
Perfect. Is there a motion to approve those recommendations?
So moved.
Motion by Terry.
Okay.
Second by Stunek.
Oh, thank you.
Any comments? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Please continue.
All right, continuing forward, the following positions are available on the following committees. The Charter Commission, two terms expiring 2026, two terms expiring 2025. HRA, one term expiring 2029. The Library Board, one term expiring either 2025 or 2030. I'll let you guys decide which one that is. Parks and Rec, one term expiring 2029. Planning, two terms expiring 2027. Public Utilities, one term expiring 2026, one term expiring 2029. TAC, three terms expiring 2027. We also have the EDA expiring, one term expiring 2026. And just a heads up, if you're keeping track at home, those numbers have greatly increased because it is the end of the year, and people have to renew, so there is an opportunity if new people want to get involved. Some people will be falling off of those committees. Other people will be re-upping for those positions again, but obviously, there are positions available.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as council president, I have one opening on the Parking Commission, one term, oh, I'm sorry, two terms, one to expire in 2026 and one term to expire in 2028. Next up is item 8B. This is the final reading of Proposed Ordinance 1562, and this is presented by our Community Development Director, Cranbeck. Anything you'd like to add to what's in our packet?
Yeah, so staff has nothing to add that is not in the packet or was discussed in the last meeting. Again, the public hearing was held at the last meeting. I can certainly answer any questions that City Council has regarding Proposed Ordinance 1562. Staff's recommendation is a motion to conduct the final reading of Proposed Ordinance 1562 and dispense with the actual reading, and then also a motion to approve Proposed Ordinance 1562. I can answer any questions.
Any questions of staff on the fee schedule? Hearing none. We're looking for a motion to conduct the final reading of Proposed Ordinance 1562 and to dispense with the actual reading.
So moved.
Motion by O'Day, is the second by Terry. It's a reminder that the motion to dispense with the actual reading must be unanimous. Any comments on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign? That motion passes unanimously. Next up, we're looking for a motion to adopt Proposed Ordinance 1562.
So moved.
Motion by O'Day, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing none. Tony, can you call the roll?
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes, that motion is, or that ordinance is adopted. Item nine is new business. Item nine A is looking to adopt a resolution calling a public hearing on property tax Item 9A is looking to adopt a resolution calling a public hearing on property tax abatement for certain property in the city of Brainerd. Mr. Cranbeck, you're up on this one.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the city received an application for public financing for tax abatement from the Foundation for Healthcare Continuums for the Country Manor Senior Living Facility, a childcare facility, and a rehabilitation services for residents and the public. The request has been reviewed by the EDA in February of 2022, and a recommendation was made to City Council to consider providing up to 40%, 45% of projected city share of annual tax abatement revenues over a 10-year period. With that recommendation, council directed staff to initiate the statutory process for tax abatement. Material and construction costs pos the project for Country Manor. For a little over a year, Country Manor is now working with staff as well as submitted applications to finalize the planning process. The proposed public hearing for tax abatement is scheduled for January 16th, in which the City Council will also review the final plan PUD and development agreement for Country Manor. And with that, staff's recommendation is to approve a resolution calling for a public hearing on a property tax abatement for a certain property in the city of Brainerd.
Any questions of staff? Chairman Johnson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. It's been a long time since we approved this. Is this a request for further abatement, or is this the same one we approved years ago?
This is the same one to start the statutory process. It was just never finalized because the project was put on hold.
But it's the same numbers, same amount, same everything we talked through in detail years ago?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions of staff? Hearing none. We're looking for a motion, and this motion would be to approve the resolution calling for the public hearing on the property tax abatement.
So moved.
Motion by Terry is our second.
Second.
Second by Stingline. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Tony, can you call the roll?
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes. That resolution is adopted. We'll hold that public hearing when, Mr. Cranbeck?
That'll be the 16th.
The 16th of January.
Of January.
Okay, at 7:30 here in council chambers. Thank you. Next up is item 9B, a resolution again approving plans and specifications, authorizing advertisement for bids, and calling for a public hearing on Improvement 22-08, the South Brainerd Reconstruction. Mr. Dean, are you still with us?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Anything you want to add to what's in our packet on approving the plans and specs and advertising for bids and holding the public hearing?
Nothing, nothing to add in what's in the packet.
Perfect. Anybody wish to make a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Motion by Terry is our second.
Second.
Second by Stingline. Any discussion?
I do.
Yes, Chairman, Chairman O'Day?
Yeah, so regarding this one, I had somebody reach out to me from South Sixth Street that lives in the project area. They access their house only through their alleys. I don't know if anyone else on the council has heard from any of these guys, but it hasn't been redone since the 80s. They would like to see it as part of the project. Currently, it is not in part, as part of the project. It's not a simple solution because it sounds like, after I talked with Mr. Dean about this this afternoon, there are utilities that need replacement underneath. But I think it's something that we need to consider, whether we add this as a second option on this project or as a separate project during this, this project altogether. But it is going to need to be done at some point, but it's, it's also going to be a cost. So it's not the first time I've heard from these individuals. It's been an issue every year that I've been on the council. I've heard something about it. So I just want that to be made aware. They actually have a petition that was put in.
Is this, is, I have a question of you, Mr. O'Day, since you brought this up. Does this have, does, can we not do this project without doing the alley? Is it that big of an issue?
It's not included currently in this project.
I mean, they're accessing their properties now.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep. The alleys are just, if you drive through them, you'll see they're beat up really bad. But it's essentially, they have no access on South Sixth since we took away parking there. And then we added a 30-foot cliff in front of a few of their houses. So they can only access their house for, for a number of these people through that alley. So that is their street. They pay, they pay their taxes on the streets of Brainerd, just like everybody else, and they should probably be treated equally as their street reaches their house. Technically, it's an alley, but it is a very unique set of two blocks where those alleys are their street.
Got it.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Jesse?
I'd just like to highlight, so we did receive the petition late last week, so we weren't able to include anything in the packet. We do have some more information we need to gather regarding the utilities and what the statutory requirements for a petition project would be, but we intend to have a lot more information to present to the council on that at the, at least the 16th, if not the first meeting in January.
Mr. Dean, is there any reason why we can't approve this, shouldn't approve this resolution without first addressing the issue that Mr. O'Day brought up and the citizens brought up?
You could really go either way. My recommendation would be to go ahead and advertise the project as it is. The earlier we advertise, the typically the better prices we get for our bids. But if we want to include it, it's going to have to push the advertiser back about a good month for us to be able to prepare plans and get all the information needed. But we can do either one.
All right. We have a motion by Terry, a second by Stingline. Chief Stunek?
I'm just going to echo what Mr. O'Day said. I've had numerous calls too, and I've driven out an alley many times. It's horrible. It's absolutely horrible. So I would like to see that move forward somehow.
Well, we got a motion, we got a second. So if you think the alley should proceed the project, the voting on the project, then you're going to vote no on this motion. Chairman Johnson?
Yeah, I, I think I'm going to vote yes on moving forward on this, and I, I think we could do a change order or something to add it to the, if we can't do that, I don't know, but I think we can add it to the project after the fact. It sounded like we can, you know, and I'm going to wait until we get a street scan of that alley before I...
Couple of years.
Yeah, but, but I think, I think we should fix the alley. I think we should have it part of the project, but I also think we should be moving forward on the project.
I, I agree. I'm going to support the motion, get this project moving, but I, I think Chairman O'Day brings, and the citizens bring up a great point. We have to do the alley so they have access to their houses, okay? So, and at this point, that's not a part of the plan. Okay, so this is a resolution. Everybody's had a chance to speak?
Stunek?
Yep. Please call the roll, Tony. Thank you.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
O'Day?
No.
Bevins?
Yes. That resolution is adopted and we'll proceed and we'll hopefully see that alley on into next, early January. Next up is item nine, new business. 9C is a first reading of Proposed Ordinance 1563, amending salaries for elected and appointed officials. This is on the main agenda by our interim city administrator, Wasso. Anything you want to add to what's in the packet?
This is formalizing the action that staff was directed to take at the last city council meeting.
Any questions of staff? Hearing none. Is there a motion to, oh, yeah, hold the first reading of Proposed Ordinance 1563?
So moved.
That motion with the...
Actually, I don't think we need that, do we? Because we already did this, did we not?
No, we gave direction to bring it.
What was the question, sir?
Do we actually need to vote on this since we already voted on it?
Yes, you do.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion. I apologize. Motion by Johnson?
Just dispense with the actual reading?
Yeah, this is...
Hold it and dispense with the actual...
This is not an ordinance. This is just to review the attached information and make changes to the city council, the city council deemed necessary.
This is the first reading of the ordinance to formalize the action you took last...
Okay, so this is an ordinance in, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Doesn't say it in the packet, but okay. Perfect. So Johnson, first reading?
So moved.
Second by...
A second.
O'Day. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson?
Yeah, I support this ordinance. I like it. I like that we're freezing council pay for yet another year, at least nine straight. I don't know how long our pay isn't frozen, but I think it's, I think it's a good thing to help save the taxpayers a couple bucks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries unanimously. Next up is item 9D, adopting a resolution setting the 2024 levy for the city and Brainerd HRA.
And we got administrator salary.
Oh, what's that? Oh. Where am I at?
90, discussion of city administrator. Oh, they didn't have it added in yours here.
I don't have mine.
Yeah, there's 90 there.
All right, so we've added addition, discussion of the city administrator salary. Who's speaking on this?
Patrick.
Patrick?
I'll take it.
Thank you very much. Not on my agenda.
So included in your packet tonight?
Yep, we got the addition. I did. Thank you.
Okay. Included in your packet tonight is an email that was received from your consultant, Jeff Weldon, GMP, and you've had a chance to review that. We received it late on Thursday, and I apologize for that, but I talked to council president Bevins about it, and we felt, both felt it was important enough to bring it to the council's attention. The consultant clearly identifies concerns. There are applicants, but he feels that there are many additional qualified applicants that are not going to apply for the position because, in his words, of $10,000 to $15,000 starting salary. With that being said, I'm going to have a handout for you. So what we included in the packet was also the compensation page from our advertisement for the current city administrator position, and it identifies a hiring range of $120,000 to $138,000 for 2023. The full salary range is identified as $120,000 to $150,000, and that information's included in your packet that was out, that in the advertisement that's out. The deadline for this is the 31st. Mr. Weldon felt it was important to bring that to your attention. In the packet, we also identified the information that was obtained from the consultant. Oh, sorry. Oh, that was, you guys didn't get that. I apologize. But what we did provide you was this handout currently that you have in front of you with the highlighted numbers. The number that's highlighted, if you recall, the city of Bemidji just hired a city administrator. They went up, they're a city of a comparable size, one of the cities we look at when we look at wages. They hired an individual with two years of city administrator experience. The starting salary for that, as published in the newspaper, was $151,000, far above what we are offering, and so I added that, this handout to you tonight, shared that with Mr. Weldon, and he was agreeable that this is good information. The very first line says city administrator option one, FH stands for Flaherty and Hood, the dollar amount, and then the FH annualized what that would cost annually. So we have, we have a policy in the city of Brainerd to go up to step four for hiring. Is that's correct? Thank you. If we were to move the $151,000 salary that Bemidji just implemented at step six, $145,000 would be our maximum salary. If, on the other hand, you went with option two, the proposed starting wage would have a maximum of $155,958,000, but a step six would result in $166,000. Now, I know these are large numbers, but the consultant felt it was very important for you guys to understand what's out there, what you're facing. There is one other city that's hiring right now, and that's the city of Fairbolt. They're larger, they're paying substantially more, but we thought it was important for you to see this information. And then on the bottom of the page with the yellow highlights that we also did give to the newspaper includes what our current numbers are for the hiring range. I'd be willing to answer any questions. Our staff would be able to, maybe better than me, so.
Thank you. Any questions of our interim city administrator, Wasso? Chairman O'Day?
How would either of these options affect our pay study results? Just, just changing this position salary?
Chris, you want to shut at that one?
Sure. I've not put the, plugged the numbers into our pay equity resumee report at this point. At this point, we have a male city administrator, so the numbers would be reflective of whatever the maximum salary would be if this is approved for December 31st, 2023 wages. Does that make sense, Mike?
Yeah, it makes sense what you're saying. No, no offense to you. I just want the public to know, whoever's watching, that it depends on whether we hire a male or female, whether we're on, whether we meet pay equity compliance, and this changes that as well if we give a huge raise to this position. And then will push us above or below that line based on whether that person, no matter how qualified they are, no matter what they've done in their past, if they're a male or a female, that would, that would be the deciding factor. I wanted, I just wanted to bring that up.
Chris, you look like you have something else to say.
It is a factor. It is not the deciding factor. And the person that we currently have in this position, as of the end of this year, will be a male. So that is what I need to report to the state. It is for your next report that you'll need to fill out in two years that, that could impact that report more.
Thank you, Chris. Patrick?
Just a clarification, as Mr. O'Day, council member O'Day is, is identifying, this is a pay equity. It's been in place, was adopted in 1984. After many court battles in 1991, it was implemented, and so we've been working with it as the only state in the entire country with pay equity.
Thank you for pointing that out as well.
Excellent. Chairman Johnson?
I would also like to just add on, tack on to Chris and Patrick and Mike's comments that under no circumstances does it weigh on our decision on who we are going to hire. It only affects pay equity states that are, reports that we have to submit to the state. We do not take gender into account in our hiring practices. So I, if it doesn't affect, I mean, it would affect our pay equity compliance, obviously, because we'd be fiddling with wages. But if we change this wage or this pay scale, is it going to cause us to have to change a significant number of other job classes? Or are we thinking that this is the only one we are going to need to adjust and still maintain compliance with pay equity laws?
It comes down to your and my definition of significant. There would be other changes, but significant's a tough number. We have number of, of job classifications and so, but we, this would affect the, the top end.
And the layers underneath the top end, too? Like, would it ripple down, is my question?
See, my definition of top end is a top two, three, four positions.
Okay, so that's... Okay, so then, you know, based on our, our market comparables that we, that we used in, in the study, Flaherty and Hood used, you know, I think step, or I think option one here probably is the, in, in my opinion, the correct choice, but that could put us in the same situation we had when we were trying to externally hire a police chief a couple of years ago. So I see the reason for maybe going with option two here and adjusting the wage, but that is a pretty significant change. So I, I don't know. I think I prefer option one, but I, I think we ought to go with one of these. I do think it needs to be increased to be competitive with just what other comparable cities are paying. We should be at the median. I just want to restate that for the thousandth time. We want to pay our employees at or slightly above the median.
Thank you. Before I ask for any other questions or comments, Patrick, is there a recommendation from staff?
We created these numbers today. We would recommend option one or two.
Excellent. Excellent. And can I, do we, do we, do you, can I ask another question? Do you think this is impacting the number of...
Yes. And the reason I had number two created was because that's the number that a comparable city, Bemidji, just hired an individual with two years of experience. I say that after having 30 years of experience, so that's why, if you're asking, I would say option number two.
Thank, I did ask. Any further questions of staff? Any further questions of staff? Anything staff would like to say before I ask for a motion? Nope? Okay. You've got this in front of you? You've heard a couple people. Anybody care to make a motion?
I will.
All right, Carrie, Terry?
So I would move that we work with option two for the city administrator pay scale for hiring.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Terry, a second by Stingline. Any discussion on that motion? We'll go with Mike O'Day and then Gabe Johnson.
I'm going to vote no. I'm more comfortable with option one. It's, it's a significant increase from what we're at right now, and even though there's other cities that are about our size that might be hiring at slightly higher rates, I'd like to think that we're more responsible with how we spend taxpayer dollars, and I'm just more, I'm more comfortable with option one.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
I echo that sentiment. I, I'd like to see us go with option one, even though that, that would pain me, but I think that's more at the, the median where we want to be. And we've got not loads, but we have some applicants with a hiring range of 120, or 120 to 138. So if we increase that by, you know, quite a bit, I think, I think option one will work. So I'm going to vote no on option two. I think option two would be option two, if option one didn't work.
Thank you. Go ahead, Carrie. Kara?
Having made the motion, I, I think the number of applicants that we have, I believe, is five at the current rate, doesn't give us a huge pool to draw from. I also believe that with the current job market and, quite frankly, our reputation as a council, it's going to take a little more money to bring folks in the, in the door. Just being honest here, folks. And, and so I think option two is the way to go to get qualified, quality applicants for this position.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'm surprised that we have a reputation. However, if it's as being the funniest council you've ever seen, I agree to that. My only concern with this is, is it's just, we're talking about absurd amounts of money. I mean, in, in the grand scheme of things, when you're looking at individuals out there making far less than this, and this will have an effect on everyone down the line, and we will have to readjust a lot. I don't like the words we just put this together today. I, we're talking about large amounts of money. I don't, I don't like that, and it makes me nervous that, you know, they... I don't, I don't like that, and it makes me nervous that, you know, we, we want to be fairly paying our employees. I, I don't want to be the high, the highest paid city in, in the state. I really don't. And I also believe that, yes, we have applicants that have put in. I do believe that, yes, there's probably a need for us to readjust this. However, applicants have come in, and the, and the process is not done yet, and I, I'd hate to say that anyone that has applied is then cast under this umbrella that they are not qualified because they were not interested in the amount of money. We have other things to offer as well. So anyone that applies is probably a legitimate candidate, whether or not they deserve, feel that they need more money or not. So I'd like to see us increase it a little bit, just to be more competitive, but I don't like the idea of us, I mean, we're, you'll take a look at that. Step eight is creeping very close to $200,000, and I am not comfortable with that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anybody else wish to speak? So the motion is to adjust our posting, I guess, to city administrator option two. We've all spoke. I think we better have a roll call on this, Tony.
Stunek.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
Johnson.
No.
O'Day.
No.
Bevins.
No. It is a tie vote. I will ask the mayor to break the tie.
Well, it's a Christmas miracle. I, I'm going to vote no.
Thank you. The motion fails. Can I look for a second motion, please, if necessary? Otherwise, we're leaving it as is.
I'd move to go with option one.
We have a motion by Johnson to go as option one, a second by O'Day. Anybody feel the need to speak again? Hearing none. Tony, please call the roll.
Stunek.
Yes.
Terry.
No.
Stingline.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes, that motion passes. Anything else from staff that we need to do on this? Not on this. All right. Now we're going on to adopting a resolution setting the 2024 levy for the city and Brainerd HRA, I presume, do, 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 I got to find you here for a second, that this will be brought on by either Patrick or Connie, either one or both. You both, let's start with Connie, our finance director.
Thank you. Yes, the final levy for the city of Brainerd and the Brainerd HRA needs to be certified to the county by December 28th. The final levy can be lower but cannot be higher. Just a reminder, the preliminary levy for the city was set at $7,121,720 and was about a 10.53% increase. The preliminary levy for the HRA was set at $173,960 and was about an 11.53% increase for the HRA, but less than the maximum allowed, allowed for an HRA by state statute. The resolution that was included in the packet has the levy set for the HRA as adopted preliminarily. However, there is not a mount filled in for the city levy. You know, we talked about that in the packet and at the budget public hearing, the levy was at 6.24%. I did mention in the packet the EDA levy that was set. The EDA board's current budget has revenues exceeding expenditures by about $43,000. So if the council would choose, they could lower the EDA's levy. Included in the packet was various amounts and dollar amounts for the city levy. I will turn it over to Patrick.
Thank you. City administrator. Lawson.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, Connie, for that presentation and all the work that you and all the staff did all year long, along with council. Following the budget presentation last week, where we had no one in the audience, or we had one person in the audience, but we had no comment, we went into closed session. We talked about a variety of union negotiation processes, and for the most part, the direction we were given as a team is not included in the budget, and so I'm going to recommend the 8% levy. With that said, I'd answer any questions, or staff would be willing to answer any questions.
Can I add one more thing, too? Also, we were below our fund balance policy at the end of the 2022 fiscal year, and I do not think that we will make that up in 2023. So anything above the levy increase could also go towards getting our fund balance range as well.
Okay. Any questions of staff? Just questions or comments? Questions or comments? Mr. Johnson.
I have a motion, if you're ready.
You got it.
I'd move we set the city of Brainerd levy at $6,958,980 and the Brainerd HRA at $173,960, and I say move.
We have a motion by Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stingline. Chairman Johnson.
It absolutely pains me to do this. This is, this is, it's a bit ridiculous, but, I mean, it's, it's where we're at, knowing what I know with the, with where we're at, with our unions, where we're at with this pay study, what we just did with the city administrator's salary. It's, we, we can't, being that we're under the fund balance minimum, or our fund balance policy, we're below 35%, we can't really be take, shouldn't really be taking risks just hoping everything's going to work out. So I think increasing it over the bare minimum of what we think we need to get by would be the prudent thing to do, even though it's, it's unfortunate.
Thank you. Any further comments? Chairman O'Day.
I said earlier that I wouldn't vote for anything above 6%. I'm not voting yes for this. I think there's always more things we can cut from the budget. There's always line items that we don't need, we just want, but we just leave them in there, and I know they're in there. I think the whole pay study is garbage. I think pay equity and meeting pay equity has turned a lot of budgets into garbage, and this is exactly where it gets you, an 8% increase. And what are the citizens going to see from an 8% increase? Are they going to notice an 8% improvement in the city of Brainerd? I don't think so. It'll be just about like it was last year. We just pay everyone more. So I'm voting no.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, in my time here, I believe this is the highest increase that we've had. We've been very lucky as a council and, and strived very, very hard. Councilman Johnson, I'd like to thank you for your efforts, to try and keep these levy increases as low as possible. And I will say the same thing. I echo your sentiments. This pains me. That number is, is so much higher than I want to see us at. Inflation is out of control. There are a lot of factors that are coming on to the city as well, but I, I agree with you as well, Councilman O'Day, that it is our job to remove things from the budget to get ourselves back in track, and that may not be possible this year. However, moving forward, I, I want to see us take a hard stance on looking at what the budget looks like in the following years to get ourselves back to a situation where we are at those lower increases.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none? We have a motion. We have a second. Tony wants you to do a roll call on this one, too.
Stunek.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
O'Day.
No.
Bevins.
Yes, that levy is adopted. Next up is item nine, while I think it's E or F, I'm not sure, the adoption of the 2024 budget. Finance Director Hillman. Anything you'd like to add to what's in our packet?
So by December 31st, at least the working funds budget, known as the general fund, needs to be adopted by the end of the year. Since the levy that was just adopted, the general fund budget will need to be updated. The property tax line item will be $4,2,650 rather than the $3,889,462 as presented. And then again, the only thing that was added or changed from the non-working fund budgets that were presented at the last council meeting was the EDA fund budget.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Hearing none, we're looking for a motion to adopt the budget as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Terry. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stingline. Any discussion?
That would be as amended.
As amended. Yep, as you just presented. Thank you. Any further discussion? Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Whoop. Patrick, can you call the roll?
Go ahead.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
Johnson.
No.
O'Day. No.
Bevins.
Yes, that motion is adopted. Thank you. Item 10 is public forum. Time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council. Time limits may be imposed. We like to see you keep it to three to five minutes if possible, and I will open the public forum at 8:42. Brent, is there anybody online?
Nope.
Okay. We have nobody, nobody with us online. And I will ask a second time if there's anybody in the audience who wishes to discuss or let us know of something of importance to them that's not on tonight's agenda. And I will ask a third and final time to please come forward if you'd like to bring something forth to the council, and we will close the public hearing and go to staff reports. We'll start this, we'll go this way, since Patrick's on this end. Chief Davis.
Nothing to add, Mr. President.
Brent, anything to add? How about, let's go online right now and go to Jesse Dean, anything to add?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll just highlight, we've been getting an awful lot of calls about ice and ice rinks, and we are really trying to do whatever we can to make some ice. Obviously, the weather this December has been really challenging, but we're still hopeful that we're going to be able to make some ice and potentially have the rinks open right around the holiday season. But keep your eyes open. We'll definitely put some posts and information out as soon as those rinks are ready to be used.
Thank you, Jesse. Eric Sharptier from the HRA.
Nothing to add.
Thank you. Connie Hillman, our finance director.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you. James Kramp, Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few items here specifically from the EDA. So last Thursday, the EDA board was able to partake in a tour of Lexington Manufacturing and see everything they do at the facility. Very interesting seeing all of the, all of the lines that they had there and everything that they do. This was part of the business retention visits that the EDA is conducting. The EDA also, at their last meeting, was able to take a look kind of at the final design of the website and logo. It's going to be a standalone website from the city of Brainerd. It's going to be specifically, one of the, I guess, the main highlights of it is going to be marketing or listing some of the available city of Brainerd property to potential developers, whether industrial or potentially residential. Also, the EDA directed staff to work with Camp Realty on a brokerage contract for property listings. Currently, our industrial properties aren't listed anywhere, so this contractor will be reviewed at the February EDA meeting. Lastly, at the next planning commission meeting, which will be this Wednesday, the planning commission will review the short-term rental ordinance specifically based on some of the language that council had for planning commission to consider. Most likely, there'll be a discussion at the next meeting, and then a proposed new ordinance and public hearing would be at the January planning commission meeting. With that, that's everything.
Thank you. Anything from the attorney's office? No. How about, how about from the human resources department? No. Thank you, Chris. And our city administrator, Lawson.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you. We'll move on to the mayor's report. Mayor Dave Bedeau.
Oh, Merry Christmas as well, first and foremost. Just want to reiterate what was said earlier about the holiday hayrides that happened at Buffalo Hills Park this last Saturday. It had to be postponed one day due to rain out of request from the owner of the horses just for safety. If that rain turned to ice, we didn't want to have the children watching an animal go down, so we postponed it a day. But still a great turnout, and it was fantastic to get out there and see the families get an opportunity to participate in something, again, within their neighborhood. So, secondly, I just want to say super fast that I tend to crack a lot of jokes because that's my personality, and that's the way that I am. From time to time, I say things that are taken in means that I don't mean them to be, so I just want to apologize if that ever happens, if that's ever the case. If I say something that someone feels is directed at them, I want to apologize for that being the case. I made some remarks in our last meeting specifically about follow-through from our council. In our search for a city administrator, I had one remark to our, to our consultant follow-through. That's what I'm looking for. And so when I made the remarks about our follow-through, it's not, it's not directed at our staff, it's directed at us as leaders. I believe very, very strongly that we, as government, fail very often to do the simple thing, which is follow-through with what we say we're going to do. And so my remarks about any type of follow-through is directed at us here at this table and not at our staff. We are the ones that do not do the follow-through. We are the ones that do not ask the follow-up questions and continue to bring the issues back up, because what we are doing is the people's work, and we are here to have their needs addressed in a manner that is public. And so if anyone ever takes offense to anything that I say, please note that I, I do not like to throw jabs at people unintentionally, so, but those remarks specifically are directed more internally and at the arrest of these knuckleheads than at anyone else. So, just a jab right at the end.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On our council member reports, we'll start on mine at the left. Tiffany Stingline.
Do we not need to, no, okay. So I was invited to join the Brainerd Lakes Area Landlord Group for their monthly meetings moving forward. They're adapting to some state level changes. That was a chunk of the meeting this month, and I just wanted to thank Eric Sharptier one more time for his thorough presentation to them. He didn't toot his own horn, so I will for him. It was quite informative about the, the housing trust fund and kind of different programs for where that money goes.
Thank you. Mike O'Day.
I just want to say thanks to everybody who came out Saturday, even though we had to delay the hayrides, like Mr. Mayor was saying. It was a fun time. It was sloppy, it was messy, but it was warm. So hopefully, we get a little bit more cold winter weather next year, and hopefully, this global warming trend doesn't ruin the hayrides.
And Jesse can flood ice rinks in July.
Right.
Absolutely. I got a chance last week to hand over the tower award to Elaine Kramer from the fire department with many, many decades of service. It was my pleasure to be able to do that. Elaine has been a great city employee. So myself and Mr. Stunek were there, and it was, it was really a lot of fun, and thank you again, Elaine. Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too apologize for nothing. But I, I do want to say, Connie, you did a great job with the budget this year. I know I really rode you hard on it, but you did a good job. It's a good budget. You got it down. We, we adopted at 10, and we said we want to get it down to six. You got it down to six. There's just some extenuating circumstances that we weren't actually able to pull the trigger on six, so that's unfortunate, but good work this year, Connie, and can't wait